The Folsom City Council on Tuesday, July 14th. Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out?
No final action, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kozlowski.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Aquino.
Here, and we would like to formally welcome Andy Moran back to the council. I know it looks like we have him sitting at the kids' table at Thanksgiving dinner, but this is our attempt at social distancing and is nothing more than that. So, welcome back, Andy, and we look forward to your experience and your expertise helping to guide the council in these interesting times.
Thank you, Mayor.
If everybody would please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation, my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay, moving on to business from the floor, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody?
You do have one request to speak under business from the floor, Donald Burks.
Welcome back, Don, it's been a while.
Well, I try to avoid this. Thank you, I hope all are keeping healthy.
Use this microphone right here, Mr. Burks, at the podium, I think that one's on.
Right here. Yeah, there you go, thank you.
All right. This is regarding landscaping and lighting districts, and I'd like to point out something that you probably don't understand. A landscaping and lighting district is a contract to have the city manage features...
Go ahead, sorry about that.
It's a contract to have the city manage features called improvements. The law requires that these be described in a resolution that sets up a district, and they must be approved by the property owners. The wording is, if there is a majority protest, the proceedings shall be abandoned. So, I'm talking about landscaping and lighting districts that exist. The improvements for the district, as I say, the law, Section B, under the thing that sets up a district, says that the location, nature, and extent of the improvements shall be described, shall be mandatory. That word is defined in Section 16 of the landscape, or of the Streets and Highways Code. I have an engineer's report here where the engineer became really inventive and added a whole lot of improvements to districts in order to conceal money that the city is unlawfully holding, and that's surplus money. If there's surplus at the end of a year, it is supposed to be applied to the following year's assessment. That makes sense to everyone except the Folsom City Council. And in the past, for a number of years, no money has been applied to reduce the assessment of the property owners. In short, the city council is defrauding property owners in the landscaping and lighting districts. In my own district, just as an example, streetlights and sidewalks are not described in the resolution that set up the district. They are not authorized improvements for steeplechase. In Lake Natoma Shores, that got kind of invented, and they added the mirror house and sidewalks. They are not authorized improvements for Lake Natoma Shores. I provided you with a spreadsheet, and if you look at it, you'll see some really bizarre numbers. You'll see districts where they spent perhaps a few thousand dollars, and they're holding a hundred thousand dollars in their fund balance. The law does not intend that. The law intends that this be an annual process to pay for what is actually done. One of the things that the engineer doesn't seem to understand, improvements are physical things. They are fountains, they are waterfalls, they, I believe some of them are artworks. The engineer that wrote this report thinks that improvements means whatever is better and that he can think of to put in there. He says, "Well, sidewalks might be necessary to prevent the landscaping from escaping." That has nothing to do with the Landscaping and Lighting Act. Now, I don't know if anyone in the city has ever looked at that act, but it seems to me that it is probably time for it to do so, and I heartily recommend that you reject this engineer's report entirely and find some honest engineer to do this work for the city, and stop defrauding the people in your landscaping and lighting districts.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming out, Mr. Burks. Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Okay, so your next item this evening will be scheduled presentation. This is item one, Folsom Plan Area Quarterly Update. Community Development Director Pam Johns will introduce the item, and then City Engineer Steve Kron will make the presentation. For those of you following along, your PowerPoint begins on page nine of the staff report.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. We have been giving you for the last few years quarterly updates on the Folsom Plan Area activity as a way for you to understand what's happening, not just in the planning entitlements that come before you, but in the site activity, mapping, and building activity that's happening on the ground after entitlements come before the city council. So, on page 10 of your packet, we just explained that this is actually a twice-quarterly update, so bi-annual update covering the last six months from January through June of 2020. On page 11 of your packet, we have an updated overall specific plan exhibit that reflects city actions and approvals through June of this year. It shows map activity as well as listing land use amendments or density amendments that have been approved within the plan area. So, it's like a tracking map that I think visually shows well, you know, where we're at with mapping and land use within the master planned area. On page 12, or Slide 12 of your packet, I have summarized the planning activity over that last 180 days. We had three final actions from the Planning Commission within the plan area. They were all for residential design review, approving, you know, master plans for approved map areas within the project. Two of those were within Mangini Ranch Phase 2 and one within White Rock Springs Ranch. And then the city council took final action on Toll Brothers, which was a larger specific plan amendment, general plan amendment with subdivision maps and plan developments, including a portion of, you know, age-restricted development that came to you right before coronavirus shutdowns. And so, we are, we had Creekstone Phase 1 subdivision map come before you more recently, and that was for a smaller lot subdivision within Mangini Ranch Phase 1. And then the final map for Enclave, which was the first small lot subdivision. And I'm going to go through just a couple of slides showing each of those entitlements. So, on page 13 of your packet, you'll see the Mangini Ranch Villages 4 and 8. This is on the south side of Alder Creek Parkway, there's 109 homes, and the development approval was for master home plans for, by KB Homes Builder. On page 14, you'll see an exhibit showing the plans that were approved for Mangini Ranch Phase 2 Village 7, and this is on the southeast corner of East Bidwell and Savannah Parkway. This was approval of the residential design review for 68 homes that'll be built by Signature Homes. And then on page 15 of your packet, you'll see exhibits showing the Planning Commission approval of design review by JMC Homes for 86 new homes on White Rock Springs Ranch Villages 8 and 9. On page 16 of your packet, you'll see exhibits from the Toll Brothers at Folsom Ranch Project that came before the Planning Commission and then city council in March. Some of these exhibits don't reflect the final actions, but rather the entitlements that came before the city council. On page 17 of your packet, those exhibits are reflective of the Creekstone Phase 1 maps and plan development that were approved by the planning, or by the city council, and this is a TriPoint Homes proposal for a small lot, single-family development of 71 units. So, this was a recent approval. And then on page 18 of your packet, you'll see a map, the final map for the Enclave subdivision. So, the tentative subdivision map for this area was the first small lot subdivision that was approved in the Folsom Plan Area, and the final map came before you on consent for action, just finalizing those 111 small lot homes that are proposed to be built by KB Homes. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Kron, the city engineer, on Slide 7, or Slide, page 19 of your packet, and he's going to go through the site engineering, mapping, and building activity in the plan area over that same six-month period. Steve?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is Steve Kron, City Engineer. I would, as Pam mentioned, we'll start my slides with page 19 of your report. And that, this exhibit outlines, highlights each of those areas where infrastructure and site activity occurred during this, the first six months of this calendar year. They're listed there, Russell Ranch Phase 1, White Rock Springs Villages 1 through 9, Car Trust, Mangini Phase 1 and 2, and, yes. So, with that, I'll move on to Slide 20. This is an exhibit with a small lot, final map activity that has occurred, and the only map that was approved, Pam mentioned, was the Enclave at subdivision, Enclave at Folsom Ranch subdivision map. That was originally approved at the city council on consent on April 14th, but it did not record until just this last week. And the reason for that, I'll kind of explain a little bit here on the next slide, and that's Slide 21. The permit, this is a permit tracking that you've seen before. We update it on a monthly basis, and we post it on the website for, and it describes building permit activity, permits issued, and then also keeps track of permits, building, those same building permits that are final, which we assume when people are moving into those units. But there was, well, we'll move on then, Page 22. I'll explain a little bit about some delays that we had during this COVID, and some future slides. So, we'll move on to then Slide number 22. And this outlines, and it's keeping track, and we'll work with the developers, engineers to map and keep track of both tentative maps and final maps, recorded maps, as well as parcel maps. And so, this is current as of this first six months of this calendar year, and it's up to date, and that's kind of map, both tentative maps as well as final maps as well. So, moving on to Page 23, or Slide 23. We had building activity, home construction activity in Mangini Ranch Phase 1. Taylor Morrison is constructing homes in Villages 1, 2, 6, and 7. Lennar is complete, has, I believe, pulled all of their permits in Villages 8 and 9, and then TriPoint Homes is now moving forward with Village 5, and Village 4 and 3 are pending. So, they're all actively pulling building permits in Mangini Phase 1. And the next slide, 24, those are the neighborhoods in Mangini Ranch Phase 1, and those are the builders, Taylor Morrison, TriPoint, and Lennar. And I'd like to also note, we highlighted the school site there in that slide, and the school site construction commenced this year and is moving forward. So, moving on to Slide 25, the building activity in Russell Ranch Phase 1 continued for the first six months. The three home builders in Russell Ranch Phase 1 are the New Home Company, they're in Village 7. Meritage Homes is in Village 4, and Anthem United is in Villages 6 and 8, and that activity is moving forward. And on Slide 26, that's a visual location, shows visually where those homes are being built by those three home builders in Russell Ranch Phase 1. So, moving on to Slide 27, White Rock Springs Ranch. We just recently issued building permits for model homes for Richmond American. They are being built in the Car Trust subdivision, which is part of the White Rock Springs Ranch development. Those models are close to being complete, and we expect them to be open to the public probably in the next month. Moving on to Slide 28, the White Rock Springs neighborhood, there's just the Richmond American Homes that shows, is over Village 1, and JMC Homes, which is not listed here, but JMC Homes was approved for design review, as Pam mentioned, and they will be building homes in Villages 8 and 9, which comprise Phase 1 of the White Rock Springs Ranch development. So, moving on to Slide 29, this is kind of a representation that I wanted to get back to. The home sales are listed for the first six months of this year. They started out at 25 and were 46 in February, and if you notice, and we're all aware of the COVID impacts, it started in March where things slowed down relatively. In some of the developments in the plan area, they conducted a pause, which is basically a temporary shutdown, basically from the end of March through most of May and into June. Since that time, construction and grading has resumed, and all the developments that were temporarily on hold in this pause period have all resumed construction and are moving forward. So, with that, I just also like to note on there, you can see that the numbers in April were low. They steadily went down through April, started to pick up in May with home sales, and then June is right back up to where we were the month before the COVID slowdown. So, with that, I'll slide to, move on to question, slide, excuse me, Slide 30, and does anybody have any questions about grading or construction activity in the plan area for the first six months of this year?
Let's start with Vice Mayor Sheldon. Ernie, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Okay. Carrie?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Mike?
I am also all set, thank you.
Andy?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Stephen, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay, our next item this evening is the proclamation of the City of Folsom proclaiming July 2020 as Parks Make Life Better Month.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming July 2020 as Parks Make Life Better Month, whereas the Parks and Recreation promotes physical and mental health and wellness for all ages through organized and self-directed play and activity, and whereas Parks and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by providing frontline jobs, childcare programs, and promoting community revitalization, and whereas Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits, and whereas Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution by providing safe spaces to come together peacefully and facilitating conversations and services in order that our communities may heal both physically and emotionally, and whereas Parks and Recreation sustain and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of Parkland, and whereas Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered through recreation, and whereas the Folsom Parks and Recreation Department creates memorable experiences through engaging virtual and physical-distanced programs, services, events, and experiences to keep families active while stay at home, and restricted orders are in place and beyond that further enrich lives daily, and whereas Mr. Jim Kerstein has devoted countless hours, days, and years to furthering the city's mission to provide an abundance of beautiful trails accessible to the city of Folsom residents and visitors, and whereas Mr. Jim Kerstein has always willingly and graciously assisted with the building of, maintenance of, and publicity of our city's over 50 miles of trails, and whereas Mr. Jim Kerstein's role in Friends of the Folsom Parkway has further contributed to the education and awareness of our city's unique environmental resources, and whereas the Folsom City Council recognizes the role Mr. Kerstein has had in highlighting the wonders and uniqueness of our city's amenities, including our local parks, trails, open spaces, and facilities for the health, wellness, development, and inspiration for everyone in Folsom. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the City of Folsom, do hereby proclaim July 2020 as Parks Make Life Better Month, and I further wholeheartedly thank Mr. Jim Kerstein for his service and commitment to our community, and in doing so, urge all citizens to use and enjoy Folsom's parks, trails, open spaces, facilities, and recreation opportunities. Proclaim this 14th day of July 2020, and I believe we might have Mr. Kerstein on the line, do we? Or just some comments?
Mr. Kerstein was not able to attend this evening, but he asked me to read this into the record on his behalf. He writes, "I would like to thank the City of Folsom for this honor. I am happy to be able to play a small role in the creation and maintenance of the trails in the city. The trail system we have in this city is one of the best in the nation. The members of the Folsom City Council and the city staff are to be congratulated to have the foresight and resolve to make it all happen. Thank you, Jim Kerstein."
Sarah, can I just add one more little cute little Jim Kerstein story? Somebody told me this a couple of years ago. As we know, Jim travels around the country on his bicycle trips. It's my understanding that he was in, I believe it was Minneapolis a couple of years ago. He was sitting in a sidewalk cafe somewhere after having gone on a bike ride. There was a table sitting next to him, and one of the people, the two people that were sitting there, one of them said to the other, "Oh, my God, the trail system in Minneapolis is fabulous." The other person said in response to that comment, "Oh, no, you should see the trail system in this place called Folsom, California." And Jim, God bless him, didn't say a word to the people that he was from Folsom, so...
Thank you.
Anyway, love Jim Kerstein.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kerstein. Next item, please, Krista.
Your next item this evening is the Consent Calendar. You do have one request to pull item number five.
Okay, is there any other council member who would like to pull an item from consent?
Otherwise, I will move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
Okay, item number five is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1306. This is an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 1752 and repealing and reenacting 17.105 pertaining to accessory dwelling units.
And Madam Mayor, before staff makes a presentation, there was a last-minute email, actually two last-minute emails from the same organization with a letter addressed to the city council asking that this matter, the second reading be postponed. The letter, the emails and the letter arrived about 6:15, so I don't believe they were printed, but they were all sent to you respective email addresses.
Okay.
The Clerk has a copy of the letter itself.
Did they give a specific reason?
Yes, ma'am, and I believe staff will address those reasons.
Okay, all right. Do we have Desmond, or who do we have?
Desmond Parington is available on the line for questions, and then...
Okay. Do you want to do your speaker first?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the member of the public, and then...
Okay, our speaker tonight is James Thomas. Come on up, and we'll set the timer up at three minutes.
Sure.
When you're ready, sir.
Welcome, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm interested in building an ADU on my property in Folsom. I'd like to ask if some revisions could be made to the new ordinance, number 17105.070. Can we change the language to not exceed 35 feet in height, and period right after that? So, strike the 30 in the last sentence. And that's, it used to be 35 feet before. So, that was my first thing, and my reason is, so residents can build garages under houses and have more headroom in the second story, also to patch, match primary home, it reflects on the style of my primary residence as far as roof pitch. And on the roof pitch, if you read 17.105.150B, it states roof pitch within 2 and 12 plus or minus. Folsom has some large roofs and big pitches, I would like to, I'd like to see a match. So, this results in a height reduction by making them 30. And number two is parking. On 17105.110K requires one-off-street parking. If you build a garage under the ADU, it resolves parking issues. Some areas have housing and parking rules, so that would be another reason. So, my suggestions would be to exempt for properties maybe over a quarter acre, or exempt for 8 and 12 roof pitches and above, or exempt if an ADU has a garage below the living space, and that way you can build it to 35 feet. This is my support for 17.105.070, the language changed for the 35 foot, and strike the last sentence. My involvement is, is I've attended meetings on the ADU. Everyone attended were from the historic Folsom. Approximately 50 people in the meeting voicing their concerns on historic Folsom only. I agree with their historic Folsom concerns, but we as a community want to keep historic Folsom historic and original. But there is some other areas in Folsom that have large lots, larger homes, larger roof pitches, and plus parking concerns. Can we update the ordinance from 30 to 35 and scratch the last sentence? Also, I don't think it's equal for a person with a taller house to be able to build a taller ADU, because it also says less than. Yeah, I bought a single-story house because I got knee problems, and not a two-story. Now, I am, I am restricted, I'm building something taller because my house is below that. So, that's my argument, and I just hope you guys consider that change on that 17.105.070, and change that last area to 35, and strike the last part of that sentence. I talked to Desmond earlier today, maybe he can comment on it, we had a little discussion about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Desmond, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, so, what Mr. Thomas has mentioned is that he would like to see the height increase for attached and detached accessory dwelling units outside of the historic district, in other words, in other areas of the city. The reason why we had, at one point, we had considered 35 feet as the height limit, 35 feet or no higher than the primary home. The reason why we reduced that was the feeling among staff that the accessory dwelling should be secondary in nature to the, to the primary, primary home. And as a result of that, and as a result of the feedback that we, that we received from, from the public that wanted to see, or I should say, who expressed concern about height, and as Mr. Thomas has mentioned, a lot of that was, of course, in the historic district. Staff then lowered that, that maximum height from 35 to 30.
Okay, and we'll come back to that, but this, who has the email from the other member of the public? Did you want to read that, or what was the...
I'd like to know what's in that email.
Yeah.
Desmond, do you have a copy?
Yes, I do.
Desmond, would you please read it to the council?
Yes, it's, it says, this is from Matthew Gelfen, an attorney for Californians for homeownership. Apparently, it's an organization based in Los Angeles. It says, "To the city council, Californians for homeownership is a 501(c)(3) non-profit organization devoted to using legal tools to address California's housing crisis. I am writing as part of our work monitoring local compliance with California's laws regarding accessory dwelling units. At your July 14th meeting, you will..." At your July fourteenth meeting, you will consider the second reading of an ordinance intended to address recent changes to ADU law. If the city adopts the compliant ADU ordinance, it will be able to maintain certain level of local controls on ADU development. Unfortunately, the ordinance has some good features, although the ordinance has some good features, we have some concerns about its consistency with state law. In proposed municipal code section seventeen one oh five oh four oh, the draft ordinance correctly provides for certain ADUs to be subject to mandatory approval as is required by government code section six five eight five two point two, uh, subsection E one, but this provision is incomplete. State law provides four categories of ADUs that are subject to mandatory approval, including internal conversion ADUs and the special categories of ADUs permitted on multifamily lives. See government code section six five eight five two E one again. The city's draft ordinance improperly applies local standards such as size limits to these ADUs. The city should add these categories to promote municipal code section seventeen one oh five oh four oh." The, the, and then, uh, next bullet, "The draft ordinance prohibits standards ADUs, including attached and conversion of livable spaces in connection with multifamily buildings, which appears to reflect a misunderstanding regarding the structure of ADU law. While it is true that many owners of multifamily dwellings will choose to develop the special multifamily ADU types provided by subdivision E of government code six five eight five two, an applicant may instead choose to develop a single ADU under subdivision A. As of January first, twenty twenty, subdivision A has been modified to replace references to single-family dwellings with primary dwellings. The draft ordinance appears throughout slightly modified setback exemption provision that provides a less generous set of setback exemptions for rebuild and partial conversions than the one required under state law. The city should instead use the exact language from state law. No setbacks shall be required for an existing living area or accessory structure or a structure constructed in the same location and of the same dimensions as the existing structure that is converted to an accessory dwelling unit or to a portion of accessory dwelling unit per government code section six five eight five two A one B, uh, seven. Proposed municipal code section seventeen one oh five one twenty F suggests that parking might be sometimes required for a con- converted ADU. Parking is never required for an ADU created through conversion per government code section six five eight five two point two D three. We urge you to introduce a revised, uh, ordinance that addresses these concerns." So my response to the, the concerns that he has raised is that, um, I believe this is a misreading and misinterpretation of our ordinance. Um, we, we ran the ordinance by, um, by HDD staff, uh, including the HDD staff that was, uh, copied on this, uh, on this email. Uh, they concurred with, um, uh, with the ordinance that we prepared. The only change that we made subsequent to that review by HDD was, um, at, at the recommendation of the commissions and our council, um, which was to, uh, allow for design review, review for ADUs above sixteen feet tall in, in height. Um, we only did that because we received an email from, uh, from, uh, HDD, um, specifically from Jose Ayala, um, who is the, the point person on HDDs for HDD, indicating that the city did have discretion for ADUs that were taller than sixteen, uh, feet. So we could place limitations on that and then make anything above sixteen feet subject to review, um, bot, uh, subject to design review through the city's design review processes, both for the historic district and, uh, for the rest of the city. So those are the only, um, changes that, that we have made. In addition, after you, if you choose to, uh, adopt this, uh, tonight, we, we have to send this, this adopted ordinance to HDD, and then they have the rights to review that ordinance. In the case, if they agree with any of, um, of, uh, Mr. Gelfen's, uh, comments, uh, then we would be directed to change our ordinance to bring it into compliance with, uh, state law, and then we, staff would, would do exactly that. But again, I, I want to emphasize that we believe that, uh, his comments are, uh, a misreading of, of our ordinance. Um, we are not, uh, the, the only real restriction that, that we have put is on ADUs that are sixteen feet or, or taller. Otherwise, we believe, and HDD has agreed, that we are consistent with, uh, with state law.
Okay, thank you. Just so the council's aware, Mr. Wong, is, is there any, um, strict timeline that we're working on here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is. The ADU ordinance is actually a compilation of numerous, uh, new legislations that the, the state legislature passed last year. And there are new updates, uh, that we're trying to conform through this new ordinance of our own. It overrides the city's current ADU ordinance, because our current ADU ordinance, as with many, many, many cities' ADU ordinance before the new legislation last year, uh, were not in compliance, uh, with the change. So, um, the state law overrides, uh, city's ADU ordinance because it's not in compliance, and hence, right now, most of the applications, if submitted, if they conform with state law without any additional limitation and restriction and, and discretion that we are able to get from the HDD, from the state, can just go. They have to be approved. So time is of the essence. Having said that, I do concur with Desmond's assessment. I have reviewed the letter, and I do not see anything incorrect with what we have structured for the council to review and consider and then adopt. And as Desmond indicated, he had the foresight to reach out to the state, for the state to give it an early review, to just make sure we're on the right track. And after this, after the council adopts the ordinance, it has to go back to the state anyway for another review, uh, through the bureaucratic, uh, level, but, but they have been very good and responsive to us. So we do not anticipate, we do not anticipate they will give us any issue, since they have reviewed it a, a couple of times, if not three. So, uh, this will be subject to a final review and approval by the state.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions or comments, maybe regarding Mr. Thomas's, um, requests?
My only, my comment would be that, um, we talked, um, for quite a while, and, and I believe the historic district folks did as well, about the need for the setbacks, especially because of massing, more so in the historic district than anywhere else in town, because the lots tend to be smaller. So I think that is significant, and I think, you know, maybe we do need to entertain a distinction between what happens with the ADUs in the historic district versus what happens outside the historic district. Because I think they are, in many ways, two different, two different stories.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Mr. Thomas, if you could come back to the microphone. So the, you indicated that your, your house is a single-story house.
Yes.
Right, and, um, the, um, i- is the, are the preponderance of your neighbors' single-story houses also, or are they a mix of two and single-story houses?
It's a, it's a mix of single and double, uh, two-story, but everybody around me is two-story.
Okay, gotcha, and the, the, the.
But we're also in, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a two-story behind could be like a single-story, too.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Based on grade.
So, I'm, I'm trying to understand the limitation that, that you're facing in adding to your particular house, where thirty feet, you know, is, is a, is, you're running into problems with that. So I'm, I'm kind of asking specifically about your instance, just as an illustration of what, you know.
I got a, uh, my roof pitch, if I'm trying to match up the, like it says in the ordinance, to match your roof pitch.
Yeah.
Within two, you know, two and twelve plus or minus. I'm at, I think it's ten and twelve. I got a pretty steep roof pitch.
Oh, so you have a very steep roof pitch?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a cathedral, like twelve and twelve, but it's, you know, it's, it's up there, and, and if you do that, I'm stuck to a single story, but I want to put a garage below, and I want the residents above. And if I do that, then I'm, my headroom is very short, and I got no headroom.
I'd almost, I'd almost consider in a variance in your case because of that cir- the circumstance.
Yeah.
Um, particularly given that all of your neighbors are two-story houses.
Mm-hmm.
Because that was my only concern when you said that initially, that if you got a bunch of other one-story houses, somebody builds, you know, a garage with an ADU above it, then suddenly you have somebody looking into your backyard that wasn't able to see your backyard, and something that's much taller than the neighbors, I can see that the neighbors wouldn't be happy about that. Um, the only other question I have about your circumstance, is the garage going to be available for parking for whoever lives in the ADU?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's why I would do that. I put it, that way the parking issue is out of the question.
Yeah.
You park there, you raise it up.
So you've effectively provided the parking spaces, so that's.
Yeah, and, and.
Yeah, so you went exactly where I was going with this, and I guess my only question then is for Desmond. In, in an instance like this, where it's sensible and, you know, fits the neighborhood scheme to be taller than thirty feet overall, is that within the discretion under the, the staff review, review process?
So in answer to your question, the way that it's currently written, no, it would, uh, it would not be. So thirty is, is the limit currently.
Right.
Um, so outside of the historic district, um, you cannot exceed thirty, and inside the historic district, you cannot exceed twenty-five feet. So, um, the, at, at this point, as, uh, um, as was mentioned earlier, um, he would need to seek a, a variance in order to achieve the, the thirty-five feet, and he'd have to make the findings associated with, uh, with the variance.
Gotcha, and then a question for the city attorney then. Is making a change to this on a second reading procedurally acceptable?
No, we have, we have to read it again.
This is not a major change, you're not changing the substance other than the limitation for one very specific, specific, uh, aspect of the ADU, so I do not believe you need to reread it again. If there's a overhaul of a particular provision, absolutely, but I don't believe this is a major enough.
My personal preference, um, given all of the talk, factual or not, about transparency, is if we change it, I think we should do another reading.
The council can certainly do that, not an issue at all. It does the council's wish.
But the answer to Mike's question is, there is a process to be granted a variance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's not a particularly onerous one, I don't think. And you have, you have, so I happen to be an architect and have stood in your shoes and asked for variances lots of times in other communities. You have the perfect excuse, or the perfect logic for a variance existing, whereas you're not doing something that's unusual, you are complying with the spirit of the ordinance, and as a matter of course, that would be a variance that would almost for sure be approved, unless there were some other circumstances that we haven't discussed.
Let's just say reason for a variance instead of excuse.
Excuse me, re, yeah, yeah, a logic for being granted a, a variance.
So are you able to change that seventeen one oh five zero seven zero, the last sentence there where it says thirty feet? Can you make that thirty-five and just put period, thirty-five in height, period? And get rid of the rest?
That's why I asked that question and why we got both of those responses, is because, yeah, procedurally we could, it sounds like. Um, in terms of the amount of attention that has been given to this particular topic, it would probably be bad form for us to just make a change like that tonight, I think. I, I agree with you on that.
Of course, if, if the council desires to keep everything the same, variance is a avenue. Variance is an option for applicants who want to proceed inconsistent or different from what the council adopts, adopted, so it, it's really up to you. If you want to make the change, um, Madam Mayor and Member of the City Council, the change will be applied citywide.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, in this case, anywhere outside the historic district area. Or you can keep everything the same, and individuals who have unique needs, they can then present their needs to the planning commission for a variance.
So where I am right now is I would rather, um, not change it. If we are going to change it, I wanted to go back up for another reading, but I still think yours is a special case, and that your issue, rather than allowing everybody all over town to build thirty-five-foot, um, units, yours, to me, would be an exception, and that would be a variance I would be likely to support.
Okay. Andy, any?
Yeah, just not having had the benefit of your previous conversation on this, but having had the benefit of seeing.
It's kind of similar to that problem in Briggs Ranch.
Well, we, we've seen many examples of this, where, you know, people do have projects and they get appealed for variances and come before us, and sometimes it, it is, it's just a very smooth process, because again, you have a compelling argument. But, um, yeah, my, my preference would be, um, you know, we need to pass this, this evening for the reasons Mr. City Attorney described. And I don't think we want to make a, a major adjustment without, you know, bringing interested parties back, and I, you know, I, I just think our best path forward is to, you know, without changes, move the item. And, and then again, I, you know, I, I feel the same way, is that, you know, there are compelling arguments for variance here. We, we do this frequently. It'll happen a lot more frequently, and I, I do know from, you know, all of our experiences is that, um, we're, we're going to get some, some interesting proposals before us, and this is going to get more frequent, because this changes neighborhoods and stuff, but it is state law, there's compelling argument for this state law, so, um, yeah, it'll get interesting down the road, but, but my, in fact, with that, I'll, I'll move the item.
And I'll second it.
Okay, Ernie, did you have any comments?
I agree with Andy.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, just one thing. Thank you very much, and I, I think you have a very smooth path to a variance.
I, I agree.
So take, take, take that.
You got it.
With you.
Thanks.
All right.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Thank you, Desmond.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we are going to adjourn to the joint city council and Folsom Public Financing Authority meeting at this time, so if you could please call, um, the roll.
Council and board members, Howell?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Moran?
Present.
Sheldon?
Present.
And Aquino?
Here, if you could call the first item.
Okay, your, your one and only item on this joint meeting is new business item number twelve. This is Folsom Public Financing Authority Special Tax Refunding Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty, CFD number ten. You have two resolutions under this item. One is a resolution of the city council, resolution number one zero four eight eight, and the second is a resolution of the board, resolution number twenty dash zero seven three PFA. Presenting tonight will be Finance Director Stacy Tumani, and if you are following along, your PowerPoint presentation begins on page two hundred and one.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is Stacy Tumani, Finance Director. In your packet tonight, we just have a few slides for CFD ten Special Tax Refunding Bonds Series twenty twenty, and as the clerk mentioned, we're beginning on page two oh one of your packet. We'll actually flip forward to the first slide, page two oh two. For some background information, the city previously issued bonds for CFD ten beginning in nineteen ninety-five to fund authorized facilities in the Empire Ranch area. There were additional series of bonds issued over the years to continue to fund facilities in this development. And then in two thousand and ten, the Folsom Public Financing Authority issued its Special Tax Revenue Bonds Series two thousand and ten A and Series two thousand and ten B, which for this purpose will be known as the two thousand and ten Prior Bonds. And now, these two thousand and ten Prior Bonds are eligible to be redeemed. We'll move forward to page two oh three. Staff recommends that the city pursue this refunding of the two thousand and ten Prior Bonds by a private placement. A placement agent has been selected, and through a competitive process, bids were solicited from lenders, and it resulted in a very favorable interest rate for this refunding. As another note, per the city's policy, there'll be no extension of debt service payments due to this refunding beyond the term of the originally issued debt. There were four years remaining on the original term, and with this refunding, the end of the term remains at September of twenty twenty-four. We move on to page two oh four. Even though the remaining term is fairly short, because of the low interest rate we were able to get on the new debt of about one point five we were able to get on the new debt of about 1.58% on average, it gives us total debt service savings of about 1.8 million for the remaining term. And also per the city's policy, in order to pursue a refunding, the refunding must generate a net present value savings of at least 3%. And this refunding will result in about a 5.97% net present value savings. Move forward to page 205. We're just recommending tonight that the city council approve resolution number 10488 and that the Board of Authority approve resolution number 20-073-PFA. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do have the financing team also on the line.
Any questions for Stacy?
Great work, and I just want to remind council that when this CFD 10 was originally formed, that's, that's how the Aquatic Center was built.
Okay, any questions? Mr. City Attorney, we need two separate motions here.
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'll move resolution 10488.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, and I'll move resolution number 20-073-PFA.
And I will second that as well.
Okay, call the roll.
Okay, board members. Howell.
I, for Andy's sake.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Okay, and we will adjourn the joint city council and Folsom Public Financing Authority meeting and reconvene our regular city council meeting. Call the next item, please.
Okay, your next item this evening is public hearing, item number 13. This is Rock Crest Subdivision located at the northeast corner of East Bidwell Street and Savannah Parkway in the Folsom Plan area. You have resolution number 10483 before you tonight for consideration. Principal Planner Steve Banks will be making the, tonight's presentation. And if you're following along, the PowerPoint presentation begins on page 863.
Thank you, Krista.
Yep.
Steve Banks with the Community Development Department. Good evening, Mayor Aquino and councilmembers. As was just mentioned, the presentation begins on page 863. And this is a proposal for the Rock Crest Subdivision, which would conclude the request for a number of entitlements as shown on the slide. Moving to page 864. This is a facility map. As you can see, the project site is essentially located within the Folsom Plan area, within the Mandini Ranch Phase II portions of the Folsom Plan area. Moving on to page 865. This is a slightly dated aerial photograph of this project site. And as you can see, it's east of East Bidwell Street, north of Savannah Parkway, which is under construction currently, south of Old Ranch Way, which has been constructed, but is not open to the public yet. Moving to page 866. As I noted, this is a 118-unit single-family residential subdivision on a site that's a little over 14 acres in size. The applicant is requesting approval of a number of entitlements, including a subdivision map, to create those 118 single-family lots, along with some landscaped lettered lots. There are two access points proposed to the project. This will be a public street subdivision. There will be no gates. The applicant is also seeking approval of design review for the master plans within the subdivisions. There are four different master plans proposed within the subdivisions with modest home sizes ranging from a little over 1,600 square feet to just over 2,000 square feet. Moving to page 867. The applicant is seeking approval of a minor administrative modification. They are underdeveloping the site and they're seeking to transfer the 35 unutilized dwelling units from this site to three other multifamily zone sites within the Folsom Plan area under the same ownership suit. And lastly, the applicant seeking approval of an inclusionary housing plan, which the applicant seeks to pay in-lose fees into the housing trust fund to satisfy their inclusionary housing requirement. Moving to page 868. This is a color illustrated site plan showing the layout of this subdivision. As I noted, there are the two access points into the subdivision. There's a driveway off of Old Ranch Way, the upper right-hand corner of the slide, and also a driveway off Savannah Parkway in the lower left portion of this slide. And as I noted, these are public streets, and there will be no, no gates involved with this subdivision. Moving on to page 869. The applicant seeking approval of the subdivision map. And staff has determined the subdivision map does meet all the requirements of the State Subdivision Map Act in terms of streets and lot divisions. Moving to page 870. This is a diagram showing the proposed lot dimensions within the subdivision. The interior lots will all be a minimum of 3,000 square feet in size, with two corner lots all being a minimum of 3,500 square feet in size. And so this is a typical lot layout that you would see within this subdivision. Moving to page 871. The applicant is proposing to meet all of these development standards established for the multifamily residential zoning designation. And so they were, they're proposing to meet or exceed all of the development standards established for this area. Moving to page 872. A couple of traffic studies were prepared that are relevant to this project. A study was prepared back in 2017 for the Mandini Ranch Phase II subdivision. And more recently, a site-specific traffic study was prepared to look at access and circulation associated with the proposed project. In terms of the Mandini Ranch Phase II subdivision traffic studies, it's been applied a number of mitigation measures that were pulled from the original EIS of the Folsom Plan area. And as with other subdivisions and projects in the plan area, this project is subject to payment for the mitigation measures to improvement in the plan area as well as outside the plan area. With respect to the site-specific traffic analysis, the analysis included two scenarios. One scenario assumes that the Mandini Ranch Village 7 subdivision improvements, which are located south of the project site, would not be constructed yet. Whereas scenario two assumes that those improvements would be constructed. And if we move to page 873. These are recommendations from the traffic studies that are included as conditions of approval for the project. And under scenario one, you can see the applicant would be required to construct a left turn pocket from East Bidwell Street into Savannah Parkway and also construct a major portion of Savannah Parkway from East Bidwell Street. If Mandini Ranch Village 7 moves forward, then the applicant would simply be required to construct a smaller segment of Savannah Parkway. And again, these are included as conditions of approval on the project. Moving to page 874. This is an access and circulation exhibit. Full access will be provided into and out of the project site, the two driveways. There will be stoplights in control for vehicles exiting the project site onto Old Ranch Way and Savannah Parkway respectively. But again, both driveways will accommodate all turning lanes. Moving to page 875. The applicant is proposing five pedestrian connection points, three connection points to Old Ranch Way to the north, and two connection points to Savannah Parkway to the south. The only place they could not provide a connection point was the southwest corner of the project site where there was some grade issues, and they were unable to provide a connection in that location. But otherwise, they have five connection points. And for a subdivision this size, this size, that's fairly substantial. Moving to page 876. A noise analysis was prepared for this project. As you would expect, the noise analysis recommended noise barriers along East Bidwell Street. In fact, seven-foot-tall noise barriers along East Bidwell Street. Six-foot-tall noise barriers were recommended along Old Ranch Way and Savannah Parkway. The noise, they did not recommend noise barriers along the eastern project boundary. However, the applicant is proposing a six-foot-tall noise barrier along eastern property boundary because the, the project backs up to the future fire and police station site to the east. So they are proposing a six-foot-tall wall along eastern property boundary, as well as enhanced street maintenance along the street, and then western boundary of the site. Moving to page 877. As I noted, the applicant submitted master plan design for this project. There are four master plans proposed within the subdivision, with three California-themed architectural files and a number of color and material on them. Moving to page 878. When reviewing the design of the master plan, staff took into consideration the Folsom Ranch Central District design guidelines. And in particular, we spent a lot of time working with the applicant on the rear elevations and those elevations that would be visible from public streets. And I want to commend the applicant because he really went through a lot of iterations in coming up with the design for these homes. Moving to page 879. This is a sample street scene exhibit provided by the applicant showing the different master plans and how those might be viewed from the street. Moving to page 880. This is a mapping exhibit provided by the applicant. And in blue, you can see the applicant showing the different roof designs and elements. And in orange, they're providing single-story design elements to break up the appearance of the two-story homes. There are, there are no single-story master plans. These are all two-story master plans. But the applicant has incorporated a lot of single-story design features, both on the front and rear elevations, to break up the mapping of the homes. Moving to page 881. This is the smallest proposed master plan, a little over 1,600 square feet. Moving to page 882. This is the 1,800-square-foot master plan, master plan two. Moving to page 883. This is master plan three, a little over 1,900 square feet in size. And lastly, on page 884 is master plan four, which is a little over 2,000 square feet in size. Moving to page 885. This is a rendering provided by the applicant as the subdivision might be viewed from East Bidwell Street. As you can see, a lot of interesting architectural details on this out face in the public right of way. Moving to page 886. This is a rendering of the subdivision as viewed from Savannah Parkway. Moving to page 887. The applicant submitted a secret exemption streamlining analysis for the project. And that analysis determined that the project is consistent with the prior environmental documents, and no new issues were identified. Moving to page 888. The project was reviewed by the planning commission at its July 1st meeting. The commission was wholly supportive of the proposed project and in fact, debated very few issues with this project. Among the issues though, they did seek clarification on the designs for roadway width. They suggested some changes to one of the street selections within the subdivision, which the applicant was agreeable to. And they, they discussed the architecture, designed the homes, and were wholly supportive of the design of the master plan and voted seven to zero to recommend approval to the council. And moving to page 889. The applicant does recommend approval of the entitlements of the Rock Crest Subdivision. I'm always happy to answer that. And the applicant, their team is on the phone call with Stephen too, the project subdivision. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Steve?
No, just a comment. This was a really bad choice of a photo with the broken sign in there.
I'm glad that at least one of the models does have a master bedroom on the first floor. I always appreciate that. Mike, any comments, questions?
No, I think it's ready to go.
Okay. Andy? Ernie, any questions or comments?
No comments.
Okay, then we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, if I.
Public hearing?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item?
You have no request to speak on this item.
And nobody is rushing toward the podium. So now we will close the public hearing and we will entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Next item, please. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, this takes us to old business item 14. This is resolution number 10485. A resolution of the city council confirming emergency order DES-05-20 amended, issued by the Director of Emergency Services.
Good evening, everyone. In my role as your city manager and also Folsom's Director of Emergency Services, I issued emergency order DES-05-20 on June 29th of 2020 and a slightly amended version of that same order on July 2nd, 2020. You should see that amended version as attachment two in your packet for this item, which is on page 897. As you know, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor of the state of California declared a state of emergency on March 4th. The county board of supervisors ratified the declaration of a state of emergency by the county health officer on March 10th. And you, as the Folsom City Council, declared the existence of a local emergency on March 16th. As your city manager and emergency services director, I'm empowered to make and issue rules and regulations reasonably related to the protection of life, environment, and property as affected by this emergency. In brief, this order directs nonessential permanent city employees previously directed to stay at home to return to their full-time work schedule effective July 1st. It requires all city employees, contractors, and consultants to follow and comply with a COVID-19 pre-screening protocol when reporting to city facilities. It requires members of the public entering any indoor city facility to wear a mask or face covering unless exempt from the statewide mask mandate. It requires every city employee to wear a mask or face covering when inside a city facility unless they are in their private workspace and socially distanced from others, or unless they are exempt from the requirement. It closed the Andy Moran Sports Complex, which by the way, it's really fun to say, to say that now with Andy here. Closed the Andy Moran Sports Complex and returned the Folsom Public Library to curbside service only. And it strongly recommends the avoidance of all indoor in-person activities in the interest of limit, of limiting the spread of COVID-19. Consistent with our municipal code, which dictates that such emergency rules and regulations must be confirmed by the city council at the earliest practical opportunity, I respectfully ask that you approve resolution number 10485, a resolution of the city council confirming emergency order DES-05-20 amended, issued by the Director of Emergency Services. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for the city manager?
I'll move the resolution.
Ernie, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Thank you very much. And back to you for your city manager report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The counties on the state monitoring list, which includes Sacramento County, have been required to shut down indoor fitness centers, worship services, protests, offices for nonessential sectors, personnel care, personal care services such as nail salons, body waxing, and tattoo parlors, and malls. This is in addition to the previous order from July 13th ordering all indoor operations to close for restaurants, wineries, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, zoos and museums, and card rooms. The Green Valley Road widening project is now complete, which is very exciting, and that is adding four travel lanes, buffered Class 2 bike lanes, a painted median slash turn lane, and a parking area for the Mormon Island Wetlands State Park. The project will include traffic, will improve traffic flow, wait times at nearby traffic signals, and air quality by reducing commute times. You may have noticed already that Folsom Fire Station 38, which is at 1300 Blue Ravine Road at the corner of Oak Avenue Parkway and Blue Ravine, is temporarily, temporarily closed for renovation. Construction is anticipated to take approximately six to nine months to complete. While the station is closed, staff from Station 38 will be housed at Station 35, located at 535 Glenn Drive. The Folsom Fire Department will remain fully staffed and ready to provide prompt emergency response for all of the city's residents, business owners, and visitors. I'm very pleased to share that our tiny but mighty City of Folsom Communications Team, which is really two people, recently received five first-place awards and the Best in Show Award from the California Association of Public Information Officials 2020 Excellence in Public Information and Communications Award Program. This is the first year the awards were judged and selected by the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. Folsom received first-place epic awards in the following categories. Communications or marketing plan slash campaigns in-house for the Rainbow Bridge Centennial Celebration. Graphic design print for the Rainbow Bridge Centennial Celebration. Annual report for the annual citywide communications reporting. And in the newsletter or magazine categories, the, all of our city news newsletters. And in the special or community event recurring category, Folsom Community Service Day. The Best in Show Award, selected from all first-place winners from all categories, was awarded to Folsom for the Rainbow Bridge Centennial Celebration Communications or Marketing Plan in House. So congratulations to Christine Brainard and Chris Shepherd. Very proud of them.
Thank you very much. Council comments? Andy, let's start with you. Andy, let's start with you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Let's see, just a couple of brief things. First, just thank everyone for the warm welcome back and also assisting in my transition back. Things are a little different. And, and one observation I have is these meetings are very different, but the, the setup really does work. And I know a lot of work went into that. So everybody was making these adjustments. And during the selection process, when you folks selected me to serve this interim position, you know, I was part of that process kind of on the outside looking in and it, it just works as well as it possibly can. And, you know, it's important for governance and, you know, I appreciate everybody's efforts on that in behalf of the community. And delighted to share the, the dais and, and sub dais down here with my esteemed colleagues. But, but I've, I've gotten very comfortable down here all day.
It's kind of like a personal dais, actually, Andy.
It's my own little world down here. I, I can see the envy in your faces. But, but with that, I'll, I'll just say good evening. But it, but it is, it's, it's great to be back. And for those who didn't welcome me, they were wondering what I was doing. So, but, but it is a delight to be back. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Mike, any comments?
Just one quick thing. I just want to thank everybody that was involved in putting on the drive-in fireworks display. It was magnificent. And thank you for all of the residents of Folsom and others that visited and complied with social distancing while enjoying trolls and then a nice fireworks display, so.
It made, made national news. It was, it was discussed on Face the Nation.
So, so once again, Folsom, giving an example of how to do things the right way. And it was just, it was really, really special and fantastic. And I'm a little alarmed by all the development that's going on right there. How are we going to do it next year? Thank you.
Carrie?
Just a reminder to everybody, I've seen a lot of cars lately running red lights. And I understand there was a very, very bad accident yesterday at the corner of Glenn and Sibley as a result of somebody running, running the light. Please, please don't do that. And even be careful approaching a green light because it may be that the other person is either not paying attention or doesn't care. People are driving at ridiculous rates of feed, of speed because there's been a lot fewer cars on the road. Please pay attention when you're driving. Put your phone down, watch for lights, and the yellow light means put your foot on the brake, not on the gas.
Thank you. Ernie?
And welcome back, Andy, again. Do we have to put his picture up again on the wall?
I think it's already there. Ernie, any comments?
I just want to thank everybody in town for their support of the fireworks across the board. It was a record-setting year. I've been doing this for 20 years and I've never seen this happen. And so, and there was only one fire that I am aware of, which is great, and a part of the people. But all the nonprofits should have done extremely well. I know the FAA set a record that doesn't, it doesn't have a break. So I say thank you and thank you to the staff because you can't do it without staff support and the fire department, the police department, everything. So it's a great year. At least it's one sunshine in 2020, you know? We got too many dark, dark clouds, you know? But I think all the nonprofits should be very happy. Thanks.
Thank you, Ernie. Tonight, we will adjourn in memory of U.S. Army First Lieutenant Joseph Trent Alba, who passed away on July 12th while serving in Afghanistan in support of Operation Freedom Sentinel. First Lieutenant Alba was born and raised in Folsom and later attended Vanguard University in Southern California, where he earned a degree in psychology in 2018. He was commissioned through the Reserve Officer Training Corps as an Army Air Defense Artillery Officer. After attending the Basic Officers Leader Course at Fort Sill, Oklahoma, Alba was assigned to the 2nd Battalion, 44th Air Defense Artillery Regiment at Fort Campbell, Kentucky. During his time there, he served as a platoon leader with the 108th Air Defense Artillery Brigade. First Lieutenant Alba was awarded the Afghanistan Campaign Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, and the Army Service Ribbon. First Lieutenant Alba is survived by his wife Ashley and his parents Larry and Laura Alba. On behalf of the City of Folsom, I want to express our eternal thanks to First Lieutenant Alba for his service and sacrifice and extend our deepest sympathies to his family. May he rest in peace. We are adjourned.